I'll call to order our regular scheduled city council meeting on Monday, March the 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our welcome. We welcome a full panel of council, except for Mr. Reynolds, who won't be joining us tonight, along with our city administrator, Mr. Madden, and our city clerk, Ms. Miller, our city attorney, Mr. Hughes, and various department heads. We so thank you for being here tonight. I think our next order is our invocation. The pleasure leads us, Mr. Crayton.
Lose a wish, please bow at this time. Dear heavenly father, thank you for all the great blessings you've given us. You've given us a fantastic place to live, great state to grow up in, and a wonderful existence. In this time, though, a lot of people are, let's just say, in a complex situation, needing your help. Please be with them, just keep them safe, and help wisdom rule out. Lord, at this time also, I'd like to ask that you be here in this room, helping us guide the city of Malden to your will and the will goodness of this world. It's Christ's name, amen. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crayton. Next item on our agenda is our proclamations and presentations, always a favorite area for me. First one is our 2022 National Donate Life Month proclamation. Reads as follows: Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. And whereas more than 106,000 children and adults await life-saving transplants, of which more than 1,500 are in South Carolina. And whereas in 2021, for the first time ever, 221 South Carolinians said yes to organ donation, transplanting 548 organs and saving the lives of 479 people awaiting a second chance at life. And whereas in 2021, 356, I'll just read this, 356 Carolinians said yes to tissue donation, enhancing more than 45,000 American lives. And whereas an average of 17 people die each day waiting for an organ transplant, and every nine minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list. And whereas according to national research conducted by Donate Life America, more than 90% of Americans support donation, and more than 62% of South Carolinians over 2.4 million residents have said yes at the DMV. And whereas the decision to become an organ donor can save up to eight lives, and tissue donation can enhance many more, men, women, and children who depend on the generosity of others to receive a second chance at life. Whereas each person should support this life-saving effort by learning more about organ, eye, and tissue donation, making their families aware of their decision, and registering online at www.donatelifesc.org, or when they receive or renew their South Carolina driver's license. And now therefore I tarry merit by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Malden, to hereby proclaim the month of April as Donate Life Month on this 21st day of March 2022. Thank you. Also proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas South Carolina's future prosperity and quality of life depend on the healthy development of the more than 1.1 million children residing in the diverse communities across our state, and 120,000 in Greenville County. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect must be a priority that requires individuals, families, child-serving organizations, schools, faith-based groups, businesses, government agencies, and civic leaders to support the physical, emotional, social, and educational well-being of all children. And whereas child abuse is a serious public health issue with wide-ranging social consequences, as data show the link between the abuse and neglect of children, and a wide range of costly mental, emotional, psychological, psychological, and behavioral issues into adulthood. And whereas parents and caregivers who have a support system of family and friends know where to find public resources and understand how to remain resilient in challenging times are best equipped to provide safe nurturing environments for their children. And whereas statewide and community prevention programs serve as proven and effective ways to reduce child abuse and neglect, no matter the geographic region, race, or ethnicity, or economic status. And now therefore I tarry merit, mayor of the city of Malden in the great state of South Carolina, to hereby proclaim April of 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout the city of Malden, and encourage all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for every child. The next item on our agenda was a GCRNA presentation. We're going to hold that until April to provide us the opportunity to give proper public notice. It was advertised through GCRNA as a public hearing. We did not provide that notice to our citizens and our community at large, so there's no problem with this wabidoo as far as holding it next month, so we'll hold that until the April agenda. Next item on the agenda is a city council meeting minutes of February 21st, 2022. What's the pleasure of council?
May for approval.
The motion, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King, any discussion, notations, corrections, additions, clarifications? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Special called council meeting of March the 7th, 2022. And I believe everybody was in attendance for both of them, so we could probably do March the 7th and March the 10th. Everybody's had a chance to read it. We could do that by acclamation unless there's objection. Here none, those two meeting agendas, whatever it is, minutes are approved. The last one is special called council meeting of March 15th, 2022. Pleasure of council on that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Mattney, any discussion, clarification, additions, corrections? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the minutes are approved as submitted. We are at a first public comment. I didn't note that, but did anyone sign up, Ms. Miller? No one has signed up for that public comment. There will be a second one toward the end of, we need to get that signed up for, see Ms. Miller. Next item is a report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Mayor, 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 members of council, I do have one item to report on. It's the Springfield Park parking lot paving project. It was substantially completed this afternoon, and the park should be opened back up no later than the end of this week.
That's my report.
Thank you, sir. I noticed it was open yesterday on soccer, youth soccer. I'm assuming that was opened by parents. Report from standing committees, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds not here, anyone on finance have anything good at the group? Here none, public safety, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say refer to the Malden report that is found on the table as you come in, and there's a picture of a nice, pretty fire truck that will be arriving to our city in the next couple of weeks. So that will add to the two new engines that came in a couple of weeks ago. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. A little bit worse, Mr. Crayton.
I wanted to let everyone know that the street sweeper vacuum truck that we have is up and running and hitting the streets. I've not seen it yet, but we are back in business of sweeping the streets.
Yes, sir. Economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney.
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
Sir, building codes, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had 10 new businesses open in February, and inspections and permits were up over last year. All I have to report.
Ma'am, recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item, unfinished business, orders, second reading, Ms. Miller.
This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Zenith Holdings LLC and located at 220 Fowler Circle by 100% petition method, and to establish a zoning classification of R-15. This is approximately 10.77 acres, and this tract touches the corner of Sunset Park diagonally across the street from Sunset Park in the city of Malden.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Comes out of BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve this on second reading.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Mattney, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, the motion to approve on second reading this annexation of tract of land, R-15 residential zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion is unanimous. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
This ordinance is to provide for the annexation of property owned by David M. Cumbia and Karen G. Cumbia, and located at 110 Rose Circle by 100% petition method, and to establish a zoning classification of R-12 residential. This is 11.6 acres, and this tract touches the planters crossing property on Plant Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also from BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this on second reading.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mattney, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion is unanimous.
Last ordinance is approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Mayor, due to a conflict of interest in the recuse letter I have on file, I need to recuse myself from this item and step out.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. At the minutes reflect, there, Mr. Mattney has left the chambers. This is coming from Public Works, Mr. Crayton.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict, the city of Malden, and allow the mayor to execute the agreement.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous, five vote. Mattney can rejoin us. There he is. There. Business, first reading, Ms. Miller.
This ordinance is to amend Section 6.4 signs of the Malden zoning ordinance to provide standards for the installation of banners on light poles and similar poles.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also coming from BDS, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve this on first reading.
Motion to approve on first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mattney, any discussion? Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. I wholly intend to vote in support of this because of what it represents, but I just need to reiterate my position from committee. This is a solution in search of a problem. The city already utilizes light pole banners. We actually have them up now promoting PB&J Festival coming up. And I just, I didn't see why we needed to add an extra layer to the sign ordinance to allow something for another governmental entity that we already allow for ourselves. If an entity such as the high school, for instance, wanted to pay for those banners and provide them to Public Works, it seems to me that that would just be a quick handoff, put them on the poles and go. They're not currently prohibited under the sign ordinance, nor are they specifically allowed. So I understand the position of legal counsel to say that we actually needed to add that text amendment to specifically allow it. But I think that, you know, as we continue adding layers of complexity, it makes it more difficult to maneuver when we need to maneuver. But with that being said, I do fully intend to vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mattney, anyone else? Here none, the motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance allowing banners to light poles, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries six zero. Next items are out of our standing committees, so we'll go straight to each committee there. Therapy dog coming from public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with our three honorable guests we have with us tonight that are laying on the floor. So a couple of weeks ago, in our public safety committee meeting, we had a thorough and detailed and very appreciative for the presentation that was given to committee in reference to adding a therapy dog to service with the police department. Chief Miller, do you mind coming to the podium? Would you like to, or would you want to delegate? Just, I just wanted to recognize our guests that were with us tonight before we... Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we have Deputy Dally and Master Deputy Brown again from the Greenville County Sheriff's Office. We have Deputy Lackey and K-9 Joy. I promise, she's happy to be here. And then last but not least, we actually have the sister to the dog that we would get if this gets approved, and that is Hope and her handler, Hobart. And Hope is nine months old, and that's what she looks like right now. She's approximately 70 pounds at nine months.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So with the therapy dog, this is an opportunity, like we discussed in committee, to add a therapy dog to the police department. Unlike most boat equipment or canines, this is an opportunity to bring this dog on with no financial impact to the city due to donors and folks who are willing to contribute everything from the puppy to dog food. This will be a literally free, no cost, for the first year, and hopefully those donors will continue. Regardless, I think in looking at it, the dog food was the only cause that we were initially looking at, and now we have someone who's going to sponsor that and donate the dog food.
Yes, ma'am. And since we last spoke, I actually was able to reach out to more local businesses such as Publix, Ingles, Goodyear, Sphinx, and QT, who are all probably going to provide between $5,000 and $10,000 each as well. Wow. Great job.
We'll go ahead and make the motion. Fully support this and think it's a great opportunity for our community to consider adding the therapy dog. I made the motion for consideration to add the trained therapy dog in service with our Malden Police Department.
Motion, Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Crayton, is there any discussion?
Only comment that I would have is I do not pity Chief Miller for having to choose who will get to train with this new addition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. My comments, and I told them earlier before I came into chambers, I'm going to hate myself tonight. It was a fantastic presentation, all the work that Corporal Sechick has done. It's, it is a wonderful tool, but Malden historically is a safe city, as seen by our past several years. Britain proclaimed as the, one of the top 10 safest cities in South Carolina. Malden's growth in the next three to five years will add approximately 5,000 homes plus various townhomes and apartment units. This will require additional patrol officers. Staff in this position would reduce potentially available patrol officers. So all the efforts Corporal Sechick has done to get donations for all this is fantastic. She knows I'm a dog person. I love my dogs, I love our canine units, I love this concept. But in this year's budget, it's the tightest one I have seen in my five, six, seven years here. Patrol officer costs us approximately $65,000 a year. That's a cost. And to take a patrol officer and assign him to another canine unit, which potentially could take them off the street as a patrol officer to do other things, it's not fair to our citizens this way. We, I come from a background of respecting law and order. The day you see a police officer or a fireman is usually one of the worst days of your life. So there's a lot of things that go through their minds and go through situations. But as a police officer, he's not a psychologist, he's not a psychiatrist, he's not a social engineer, he's not in a different society than even though it's a different environment this day. So based on that, that's the only reason that you heard me not support this position in the city of Malden. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good. Thank you, sir. Not a problem. Not a problem at all. Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. King.
Thank you. And I appreciate what you, what you added and your statement. However, I think it's important to note that therapy dogs are used for calming in various situations. It's been proven, and it was also presented to us a couple of weeks ago, again, in that presentation. I also feel like as we continue to develop our community, community development team and our involvement of not only our police department, but all of public safety within our community, this is yet another tool that the city can use in our efforts to do so. So again, I respect what you have to say, and I understand where you're coming from. However, I think the, the good to the city would outweigh any negatives if we want to say that there are negatives. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other comments?
Would we have to have another canine vehicle?
If I may, so as I stated in the last, in the committee meeting, temporarily, we do have two canine kahos sitting in a lower lot. We can utilize that for the time being. And then I suggested that we use a Ford Explorer that's already in the budget that we're getting due to the fact that this officer may stay on the road for a length of time with the dog. And the insert and everything provided, the shipping handling for the insert, the actual insert, the carbon monoxide detector, all of that is already going to be covered from the 9/11 foundation. They're going to provide us with all that. All we have to do is provide them with the vehicle. And again, that would just be a vehicle that's already in the budget.
All right. Thank you.
Kuzner, anyone else? Mr. Crayton.
Just, I was always under the assumption that the officer would still be working as normal, just as it'd be in addition to that duty, an addition resource, additional resource. And having dealt more than I would like to with PTSD, a dog being there at the time of the trauma can make a world of difference.
Sir, if I may, Officer Hobart actually just used canine Hope for the first time. It's made South Carolina history on a...
Can you step to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry, Matt.
Sorry, people, people watching online can't, can't hear.
So I'll go into too many details. We had a domestic violence victim that was very hysterical. We were trying to ask her questions, but we couldn't get her to calm down. So I asked her if she was okay with dogs, and I brought Hope in, laid her down, and she better, was able to calm down and actually laugh. And I've also used her on a mental health call for, I know having some mental health issues, I don't want to, but I was able to get him to open up, and he wasn't talking to anybody. I just laying on the ground and let him bear, pet her. And she goes to community events and all the other stuff that she's put up there. But those are the actual calls that I've deployed her on in patrol, and she's been certified.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? No? It carries five one. Next item on the agenda is a contract amendment coming from public safety also. Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've already voted on the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the new fire department and police substation. This is a resolution for the contract. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for a contract with Cloverleaf Group LLC to serve as construction manager for the construction of the new fire station and police department substation, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract and related documents.
Thank you, Ms. King. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crayton, any discussion?
Mr. Allgood.
I just had one question. This is not a LEED certified building, correct?
Correct. Thank you. Sir, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve the contract for our new fire station, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous, six zero. Enterprise management software purchase, PW, Mr. Crayton.
At this time, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the council approve the purchase, contractual purchase of the asset management software for, that will track all of our basic heavy, sorry, equipment, commercial equipment throughout the city, bringing us up to date with the modern city. Thank you.
Mr. Crayton, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King? Thank you. Any discussion? Couple of things from my point of view. This, we haven't had great success with buying software in the course of the history of Malden, especially with this particular department. And also needs to be noted that this is being purchased with ARPA funds, which is a great utilization of those funds. Everything we need on the record is the fact that this will be an ongoing expense of approximately $20,000 to $27,000 every year. So just remember and keep that in mind that that's going to be in your budget as long as we use this software, keep a maintenance contract going. So ARPA funds are a one-shot deal. The $20,000 to $27,000 will be an ongoing expense. Not sure what fund that would come out of, that...
Mayor, that would come out of sewer fund.
Sewer fund. the implementation of enterprise asset management software, your resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item before us is an on-call stormwater engineering service, Public Works, Mr. Craylon.
All right. At this time, I'd like to, excuse me, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the on-call stormwater engineering services with KCI and with, between us and the city, between KCI and the city, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon. And there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood. Any discussions? Mr. Allgood, any discussions?
It's like, it's like you say, I'm glad that we finally got to this point where we now have a professional engineers, organization looking at our stormwater. We waited too long to get working on this, but it's the right thing to do to have the engineering services in place to look at an area and say, this is what you have to do to fix the stormwater. There's a lot of good ideas, a lot on, you know, things that, you know, could have been done maybe a little quicker, but this is the right path going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon. Any other comments? I know many of us have walked the streets for the last many years and been hit with this over and over again. So kudos to our city. We are stepping up to something that was ignored for 14, 20 years. We won't catch up in one year or two years. Outside my window at the house today was our PW crew getting a ditch flowing again on, can't remember the name of the street, on air in that section there. So again, kudos for stepping up and getting the water to flow to the proper drainage ditch to go down to. In essence, that was as, poor engineer called, that is considered a blue line tributary of Gilder Creek. Then I would call it a stream through a ditch, but poor engineer has an official term for it. So kudos, I appreciate this. Thank you, Mr. Craylon, for moving forward with it. Thank you. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve an on-call engineering contract via the tax resolution to provide stormwater project design service, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Sir, back to you, Mr. Craylon.
All right. HVAC, correct? Sure. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract with Waldrop Mechanical for services, the HVAC units being replaced throughout the citywide owned facilities.
We have a motion, Mr. Craylon, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. King, is there any discussion? One thing I would note for us also that this allowed us to accelerate our HVAC replacement units throughout our city buildings. It gives us, what, 11, 16, 18, 21, 26 units to be replaced. This is also a utilization of the ARPA funds, the one-shot deal that would be able to get all this done. The one note I would have with these 21 units, they're all replaced this year, that means eight to 10 years from now, they'll be due to be replaced again. ARPA probably won't be around, so keep that in your budget consideration as you move forward. Been a type. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve a contract via the resolution with Waldrop Mechanical Services for the replacement of HVAC units contained within city facilities, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Okay, one more, Mr. Craylon, back to you.
This is a nice, easy one. This time, I'd like to, I'd like to ask for approval to accept a $25,000 grant from Palmetto Pride for litter pickup in the city of Malden.
We have a motion, Mr. Craylon, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mattney, any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is something that I think about a lot. For anybody who watches me while I'm out and about, I frequently up and down North Maine, trying to get some steps in. And, you know, it's unfortunate for our city that it seems like every time we have an adopt a highway crew or a volunteer crew get everything picked up from the roadside, it's not 20 minutes before somebody drives through and starts throwing literally a bag of trash out the window. Or we see debris from a mattress container. It's very disheartening that there are a few folks who have absolutely no problem putting a blight on our city from an aesthetic standpoint. I know that, that those are not people who live here, they're not people who work here, they're people who are driving through and don't care for the city the way that we do. So I am appreciative to Palmetto Pride for awarding this grant to the city and look forward to what it can do in helping us get off of our streets what doesn't need to be there in the first place. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mattney, any other comments? From my point of view, I wanted to also give kudos to our recreation staff that sponsored the cleanup effort on our streets at least twice in the last year. I'm not sure the vests and the bags and the pictures, I don't know if they were purchased by us or donated by a group to our recreation staff, so we appreciate them. And I would encourage us to develop our proactive effort with PW to work with recreation and other local volunteer organizations to help us do this. They are actually people who like to do this because they have pride in our city. And it would be great if we could increase enforcement, but litter is probably, I would guess, one of the hardest things in the world to catch. Now Greenville at one time was going through the trash on the side of the road, finding receipts and chasing down receipts. The owners saying, threw this out. Great, moving forward, I applaud this effort. So thank you for the consideration of Palmetto Pride grant. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to accept a $25,000 grant from Palmetto Pride to fund a litter pickup crew, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Are now back to, as we stated, or I stated earlier, the GCR resolution will be on in April, where we can advertise, it has a public hearing, and we'll try to have that prior to either a regular called council meeting or committee meeting, whenever we can get that scheduled. Back to public comment. No one signed up? And no one has a passion to speak? Council concerns? Here none, what's council's pleasure?
I just want to say, for future, we bring in dogs, could we maybe do it later? Because I get all choked up and throws me off for the rest of the day. I'd just like to thank everyone, actually, for everyone coming out here with the animals to, to put some real substance behind the discussion. So thank you.
Thank you to Corporal Sechik for a fantastic program and presentation. As I said earlier, I hate myself already, but I knew I would. That's okay. It was symbolic more than anything else. All right. What's the pleasure of council adjournment?
To move.
Motion, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. 39. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.